You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, we are going to call the August 4th Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Roll call, Brooks.
President.
Chuck.
President.
Brian.
President.
Thomas.
President.
Alyssa.
Here.
Rob.
President.
We have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the consent calendar, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, approval of minutes of the July 21st, 2022 regular meeting.
I would like to make one change and one addition, please. On, um, uh, let's see. In the paragraph about the public hearing of the lottery casino, the EOLottery Casino, it says alcoholic beverage establishment, but just to be clear, they were asking for a malt beverage license, not a alcohol license, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was thinking that the minute should reflect that, say malt beverage, malt beverage establishment. And then on the next page, it says a public hearing was held to consider a variance application. And then it probably ought to say that the applicant wanted to take down his fence and not replace it. Other than that, I'd move to approve.
You guys got that? Very good. A second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, public comments. This is the time where you are welcome to come address the commission for anything you like. We'll give you five minutes. If it is on the agenda, we will get to you when we get there. Anybody have any public comments? Okay. Hearing none. On to item number seven, conditional use application. Patrick, which one is this? Is this the, uh?
This is the Brandon 90 Plaza, conditional use. We have not received any new information from the applicant. We did give them 30 days, and that was July 7th, so to, we are not quite outside that period yet, so they have a couple of days to get us information. If they don't, we will, they are outside their window at the next planning and zoning meeting, so that will be the end, and they would have to reapply if they so choose to do so.
So, we can, we can move to, uh, put this off until the 18th?
I believe that is the correct date, yes.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Go ahead. Motion to continue. Second. Motion and a second to continue this to the next P and Z meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, home occupation application for 1107 East Lark Street. Hold on a second. Steven? Come on up, man. Let us know what you'd like to do. Yep. Is it on, Patrick?
He just has to push the button.
Yep, push the little button there, the red light will come on the microphone, and just let us know what you would like to do, sir.
All right.
Yes, name and address, I'm sorry.
That's right. Uh, my name is Steve Reed, R-E-I-D. I live at 1107 East Lark Street. What I'd like to do is, uh, establish an FFL and sell firearms primarily online from my home with few, or a limited number of onsite visits made by appointment.
Okay. Commission, you have any questions for Mr. Reed?
Um...
Remember to use your microphone.
For the firearms, it'd be anything that you could buy, say at Shields or Gary's Gun Shop, with the exception of, I wouldn't be offering fully automatic firearms, anything that would require Class III, so no short barrel rifles, no suppressors, or anything like that. So just semi-automatic pistols, rifles, bolt-action, uh, bolt-action rifles, things of that sort.
Okay. You got more questions?
So why do you want to operate it out of your home instead of starting a separate business somewhere?
So, right now, I'm full-time employed. I want to do this just as a little bit additional money on the side. And then maybe if things progress to a point where I do need a storefront, or where it'd be best or better for a storefront, that I would make that, um, that I would take that next step at that point. So just start off small, and if it gets big enough, then, then progress.
Any estimation how many guns you're going to keep at your home?
To start off with, for sure, it would be as ordered, so like, say you came to me and you want, you knew what you wanted, I would submit an order for it, and when it came in, I would contact you, we would meet, fill out required paperwork, and go from there. So I wouldn't have additional firearms, um, and I wouldn't have like a storefront, like you couldn't come over on a whim and just browse what I have. It would be, you order what you would like, we talk about it, when it comes in, um, we'd go through that process, and you'd take it home.
Could you address specifically what FFL license you're going to acquire?
I believe it is a Class I, um, so that would exclude, or that would, that would allow me to sell any type of semi-automatic pistols, rifles, any type of bolt-action or single, uh, single, excuse me, single-shot firearms. I believe it's a Class I. I haven't applied for it yet, um, just, I wanted to see how things went here first.
I'm familiar with the different classifications.
Okay.
So, maybe if you can address for the rest of this board, as well as the audience, what that allows you to do and does not allow you to do? There are classifications, obviously, that allow you to manufacture, to...
Oh.
To do other things, so...
It would allow me to sell those types of firearms. I wouldn't manufacture anything. I would go through a wholesaler. Does, does that satisfy the...
So, one of the items here in your application, you also talked about some signage. Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Oh, um, just to have a small sign pointing to go to the door where I would meet whoever to fill out the paperwork and, and do the exchange. So it wouldn't be illuminated, it would just be, I don't know, maybe a one-by-one, or, excuse me, one foot by one foot?
What about ammunition? Will you store ammunition on, at your home, and will you be manufacturing like your own?
No.
Shells, shotgun shells, or whatever?
Nope, I won't be manufacturing anything. Again, kind of with, uh, if you want something, you would come to me, we would talk about it, and if you decide you want it, then at that point, I would order it, and then when it arrived, then we'd go through that, that process. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be holding on to excess ammunition.
Wow, what do you mean by excess?
Uh, I wouldn't be holding on to additional ammunition that would be up for sale.
Paul? Paul, don't, we allow, um, a little bit of signage on home occupation?
We allow two square feet in residential.
Two square feet? But not...
But that would be for any, any sign that would be, and so it'd be a Booster Club sign, it would be a whatever sign was in your, in your yard.
Yeah, daycare, whatever, right. But it has to be on the house, not in the yard, can't be in the window. Is that correct? Not lighted. You said it wasn't, you weren't planning to light it up.
Correct.
Not in the window.
Not in the window.
On the outside of the house.
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions? We'll get there.
Is this similar to the other, the, we approved one of these kind of things a few months ago?
I think it was maybe a year or so ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was a gentleman who was painting gun stocks.
But he was selling too. Yeah.
He was doing the dipping.
Yeah, he was dipping them, and, but he was, he was buying and selling too, correct? So that would be similar to this?
Did, did that, do they have an FFL license for that business, Patrick?
Just for the stocks.
I thought he was buying and selling.
No, not for a stock, you don't have to. If you're, you need an FFL for the action.
Yeah.
You don't need it for the other parts of a rifle, you don't need it for the scopes, stocks.
Yeah.
Just for the action of a rifle.
So Patrick, does he have?
I, I don't, this was a little bit before I was here. I don't recall if he was just here for every home occupation needs a conditional use, or if he was here for a license, but Brian seems...
So, he was difting products, so basically what he was doing, his process was you lay a sheet of material down, you dip the product in it, whether it's a gun stock, whether it's a, any other type of product.
It's like paint?
Yeah.
Paint that's floating on water, and you dip the thing in it to get a pattern, or, yeah. But I thought he was buying and selling guns also.
No, he was not.
Okay.
I remember that part, he was, the people that came were talking about the fumes.
Okay, any...
Just for clarification, anybody can get an FFL license.
Correct.
And you don't, we don't need to go through this more.
We, yeah, we, we don't issue the FFL license, we just issue the conditional use.
And FFL means Federal Firearms License, right, yeah.
They're actually very popular years ago, before the electronic age. FFL licenses were very popular before the electronic age, where you asked to, you used to have to go in, fill out some paperwork, and you'd have to, you'd have a waiting period. It was mailed in, it'd come back, and then you were approved to purchase a license of firearm. Now with it being electronic, a lot of that's gone away, but anybody, as long as you're not a felon, you're not a domestic abuser, and not a drug user, you can qualify to get an FFL license, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, anybody out there have any comments or questions? More than welcome to come up.
I have one real quick.
Okay.
Can you say anything about how you would store inventory that comes in? I mean, if there's a period of time in between when you acquire something for a customer and, and the delivery's made?
I'm sorry, I would have it stored in a safe for the time being.
So back to my question, if you, if you have orders that are stacking up, waiting for somebody to come get them, how many guns would you feel comfortable storing at your house?
Depending upon what it is, right now, I would feel pretty comfortable with anywhere between six and 10. If, if for any rhyme or reason that exceeded that number, I would get additional, like an additional safe to, to store that equipment.
And Paul, our, our ordinance says about home occupation, that inventory cannot exceed a certain percent of the square footage of your home.
Good call.
No more than 200 square feet of an accessory building can be used for home occupation?
200 square feet?
Of, of an accessory building, you're going to have it in your main room?
Correct.
So no more than 50% of the home can be used for the home occupation, excluding daycares?
Yeah.
So that accessory structure is made, um, no more than 50% of the home can be used for home occupation?
So 50% of your, of your living quarters, of your house, and then, and then what did you say about a, an accessory building?
No more than 200 square feet of an accessory...
200 square feet of an, and you would not exceed that?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Any more questions? Anyone? Okay, now I would invite, anybody else who has anything they'd like to say? Go ahead. Come on up. Hey Chuck, can you turn your microphone off?
Thank you very much for the time. My name's Dan Mostack, I live at 1112 Lark Street, across the street from, from the applicant here. I just have a couple additional questions, both for the planning and zoning, as well as for the, for the applicant as well. Is it the planning and zoning's intent to approve a conditional use permit without seeing an FFL approved by the applicant?
We can put conditions on, if we approve it, we can put conditions on it, like, that's why I call it conditional use, so we can say, we approve it, but not if he doesn't get his license. It does, it, the, the approval won't count unless he gets his license, we can do that. We do other things too, like for daycares, it requires fences, and, and...
Isn't that perhaps putting cart in front of the horse a little bit? The way we see it, or at least the way I see it.
Well, state and federal law prohibits anyone from purchasing firearms wholesale without an FFL license, or selling firearms without an FFL license. So, if the applicant chooses to do so without a license, he's violating state and federal laws, which isn't up to this board to decide. What we're here to decide is to run a business out of his home.
Selling firearms?
Yes.
Um, conditional use would be for any business, but yes. This particular one is for that, yes.
And as I heard the conversation a little earlier, you didn't know for sure if this is setting a precedence regarding selling firearms under this conditional use permit as a home occupancy, or was there some, some question about that? It seems to me that this is, you're setting somewhat of a precedence on, on allowing this individual to do this, am I correct?
Is there another FFL license in the city, Brandon?
Six.
Six of them.
Two Class 7, or three Class 7s.
Oh, hold on, sir.
You gotta, you gotta come up here and you gotta talk.
So just hang on a minute. Okay, all right. Couple of the questions. The thing of hours of operation was not discussed. I'm kind of concerned about the hours of operation that this would take place. I would certainly think that, uh, at a maximum amount would be dawn to dusk. As a neighbor in that neighborhood, I would prefer not to see anybody after dark going to 1107 Lark Street buying firearms, which is my personal opinion.
Okay.
I've also looked at the conditional use permits, the, the chapter 15-21, which I believe was indicated as being a part of the conditions here, and I would like to point out on 1521-1, and it's paragraph E, and below that, it's 2F and 2H. 2F, I believe, was already discussed, because it was talked about if signs, if any, and a proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic, safety, economic effect, and compatibility and harmony with other proprietary properties within this district. H indicates a general compatibility with adjoining properties and other property in the zoning district in which such use is to be located. There is not a single item anywhere in our neighborhood where anyone else is attempting to do this. And I would strongly encourage you to deny this individual's request for this type of home application. It just doesn't fit our neighborhood, plain and simple. And that's what I've got to say this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Just briefly for the board, on page 34 of your packet, we did receive a letter from a neighbor. That was emailed to, I think, Brooks and Tim, but that is in your packet as well.
Name and address, please.
Um, I'm Chelsea DeYoung. I and my husband just purchased the previous Doodle Bugs and Dinosaurs daycare on 701 East 8th Street. This was just brought to my attention, but I guess for my, he brought up hours of operation. We have children out, we're going to have children out in the playground out there, so I know one of his concerns was the evening hours. I guess for me, and our business, and the safety of the children, my concern is more the daytime hours. I would just, you know, our first priority is keeping the children safe, and I would just, um, never want something to happen being so close to the playground and with the children outside. So, that was just a concern that I had. And then also, um, I guess a question, I don't know if this would be a question for you, or for you, but what would be the difference in clientele? Like you said, you would be getting, um, selling guns that you could get at Shields or Dick's, or those sort of things. So what would be the difference in clientele for someone going to those stores versus going to your home and purchasing a gun? Why would they not just go to Shields or to a store to get those guns? Why out of someone's home? It's just...
Could be a pricing difference.
Okay.
Actually, I'd probably say that that's probably the biggest thing.
The biggest thing, okay. So that's all I had, was just the hours of operation was a concern for me during the day with children out and about, if we're on walks or out in the playground, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Name and address would be appreciated.
James Robey, 1113 East Lark, two doors down. So currently, we have six FFLs in the Brandon area, 3-7, and 3-1s. Of the 3-1s, which is applying for, 481st Avenue, which is north of the Red Barn, towards Garrettson, uh, we have KNC Emporium, which is north of I-90, it's kind of Corson, rural, and then there's one on Magnolia. So, only real residential one is on Magnolia. The Class 7s, uh, Dakota Laser Engraving has to get a Class 7, because he modifies them by laser engraving, uh, barrels and things like that. Reaper Arsenal, uh, down by Arby's, and CNC Manufacturing, 900 Ash Street, which is a machine shop, uh, CNC.
Yep.
They can manufacture, I guess. But the Magnolia guy, he's been doing it for a while. He does the custom stocks, talked to him today, Steve Hanson, uh, and he, he just fixes guns. He's a gunsmith. That's what he does. So, I, I would stand behind Dan here, and I don't want it in my neighborhood. Thanks.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Colin Barron, 1109 East Lark Street, so I'm directly to the east of Steve. Guess the main concern that I've got is that I have six bedrooms that will be less than 50 feet from the entrance to what he's going to now use as his business, I'm assuming. Makes a whole lot of people nervous, people coming and going with guns. I would be curious if he's going to provide any type of a waiting list. Is he going to require somebody that's going to be picking up a pistol, if he can run the electronic FFL on him? Do they still need to wait five days, three days to come and actually retrieve that firearm once he's gotten that, or does that electronic verification give you permission to walk out of there that day with that gun? I don't know if you have an answer to that, Steve?
I guess I would like to get the information sooner rather than later, so that way that transition would be as smooth and quick as possible. So, collecting that information prior to is something that I would like to do. Understand, though, it's not going to be ideal in all circumstances.
So, I, I guess my concern is, is that, that his business is also going to be roughly about 1,000 feet from the end of the football field. A little bit unnerving to realize that with what is going on in today's age, I realize we can't prevent everything, but again, this just doesn't seem like an appropriate fit for this part of town. This close to a facility that can have 1,000 or more people in it during a football game, somebody can walk out of there, be at the end of that football field, and, I mean, obviously they can drive up there as well, I just think that this is creating and opening up undue risk for the whole area. I also have some security issues. He's indicated he's going to get a safe that's going to house these guns. Here again, what types of checks and balances are there after the fact? I'm going to have maybe seven, eight, nine guns, after that, I might need to go buy another safe. Who's going to tell us that he went and bought another safe? How do we know that he's actually following guidelines? Who's going to ever step in and do any double checking? Does FFL do any backups on, on, here's what I'm going to do? We all know that things change after they start, a lot of times. Potential increased traffic. He's indicated that he's going to have potentially one parking stall available. That parking stall will be his driveway, which means that his vehicles will be in the street the majority of the time. I get it that it's a public street, that can happen. Again, it's just something that I don't think fits the neighborhood, to have somebody that can create a parking stall in their, in their driveway. I think he already addressed whether he's going to sell incidentals or not, but will ammunition be available? If I walk in to pick up my gun and I need a box of nine mils, can I get them? Well, I can walk out the door, I can walk down to the street, I can be at the football field in minutes. I just think that this is not a good fit for the neighborhood. Absolutely in no way do I want to discourage Steve from creating a business. I think great that he's trying to expand and do more, but I just don't think this is a good fit. As I said, I've got six bedrooms that are less than 50 feet from the entrance. We don't know his exact hours, because it's going to be by appointment. We've got one disagreement with daytime hours because of a daycare. So do I want people coming and going from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock at night? There again, he's not indicated that he's going to have one customer a day, one customer a week. I think we just need more information, and I would encourage you guys to postpone any approval, uh, tonight, just in order to get some additional information, and, and possibly see some additional information on what that FFL would, uh, would end up actually telling us, I guess. There, there's not an FFL license here for us to look at that tells us, these are the requirements, this is what the FFL does or doesn't give you, and I just think we need more information. Again, I encourage you guys to postpone any, um, approval of this until maybe some more information can be brought forward. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Oh, hold on. Oh, oh, we're going to have this line up here. There we go. Paper, X, scissors. Who's going next?
My name is Dan Plute. I live at 1012 East Aspen. Our backyards with these two properties involved, with the applicant and myself, are common. We touch each other. For the sake of being brief, I do agree with comments that I have heard here, that at least ask for a hold on this approval, or none. ask for a hold on this approval or none approval. I have a couple of questions that I didn't understand when I was sitting back there, but are you going to have a showroom where people can come and look at guns?
No.
Are you going to take in guns on trade?
Circumstantial, based on like their condition and what I would see as a desired firearm.
Okay, well, I don't know of any gun shop that does not take guns on trade. In fact, it's to your betterment to do it because it opens the door for more sales. If you take guns on trade, it puts the situation in whereby you're gonna have to have some guns available that people can't see unless they can come and look at them. I guess I have a concern with the amount of traffic that this business can generate. If I were to have this business, I would be taking guns in trade, and I would have to be able to show people those guns and, in order to sell them again. The question here is not whether the applicant is gonna operate legally, I totally assume he will, but he'll have to operate within the guidelines that you folks set also. I am concerned about the amount of traffic that this can generate. Anybody in this room that knows me knows how I feel about the Second Amendment, and I don't have to explain that, but I'm a total proponent. I just don't think that this business should be sitting in the middle of a residential area. If I were to start a gun shop, I wouldn't start it in a residential area. I'd start it where I could have people come and go and run it as a business. Otherwise, I don't think it's destined to survive, but to put it in the middle of a residential area, I think, is wrong. And that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Next.
I'm Sherri Langner. I live at eleven oh eight East Lark. My husband and I do. I've been waiting many, many years to buy a house on Lark. I have a particular fondness for it. I grew up a block away, and I know the guy who built our house that we live in now, he built my mom and dad's house. We moved into our house less than a month ago and are thrilled to be there, and nothing like wrecking a neighbor right off the bat, but we are not thrilled to have a retail business in the neighborhood. That's not what this neighborhood is. It's a, it's very residential, it's been there. Our house is from nineteen sixty-one. I'm not interested in having retail businesses in my neighborhood. Honestly, if we had known that this was gonna be an issue, a retail wholesale business of any kind, that would've slowed me down considerably. So I'm concerned about that. I don't think it's the right neighborhood for that. I'm also a small business owner myself, so I sympathize, and I hate to get crosswise with a new neighbor before we've ever even met, but it's not the right place, it's not the right setting for a retail business, period, and it's certainly not the right setting for a gun business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I'm Julia Gottsleben. I live at eleven oh one Lark with my husband Wayne. We're, Steve's right next door neighbor. Steve's a great guy, so it's not about his integrity as far as being a person. We're glad that he's our neighbor. What he's wanting to do, I know, is he's wanting to grow and make a little extra money for his family. I'd like him to still do that, but not next door to me. So for that reason, I would deny him to have his gun shop right next to our door. It's not, it's about safety. I'm a nurse. I want everybody to be safe, not only just in health, but in our community. We've lived in our house for thirty-six years. So when we decided to come to Brandon, that's what we were looking for, some smaller town, safety, great school system, and a peaceful neighborhood. And we found it. We found it on Lark Street. Lark Street doesn't go all the way through, doesn't go anywhere. It's a nice, quiet little community. A lot of us are now retired, so we're home during the day. So we see more of that traffic. The traffic has increased some, but most of the time, it's people coming and going from our own homes. We do have a lot of UPS trucks and FedEx trucks, but I think part of that is from the pandemic world. We now order everything rather than going to the stores. So for that, I'm guessing that we will still see that type of traffic continuing to grow. The traffic that we probably will get with a business next to us, you know, it's, it's people that have never really traveled down Lark Street. So that kind of traffic will be increasing. The problem is, is that it brings more awareness to our little community of our Lark Street neighborhood and the side ones. I noticed that there are several people that are over from Eighth Street, and then, of course, right on Aspen as well. So we all have kind of that same concern. We want our area to stay safe. We don't want to have to worry, because now our community knows that we have guns and probably a little more cash available in our neighborhood for break-ins and theft is another huge concern for me. And if one person breaks into their house, I'm right next door, or maybe they got the address wrong and they hit our house first. We have a lot of, we have grandchildren, our children come to visit, I need to keep them safe as well. You know, in this day and age, with all the shootings, and I know the gun awareness, I'm not an anti-firearm person. My husband loves to go hunting, so I'm not against guns. It's just where the right place is for them. And I will agree, I don't feel that the right place is in our residential area. I'm hoping that he will go and do his second business in a commercial setting. So, you know, one never knows when a break-in can go wrong. I don't want to have to be that grandma with my grandchildren in our home to worry about them. And we never know when we put a gun in the wrong person's hands. So for that reason, I will address, I want our neighborhood to stay a residential neighborhood. I don't want a business, especially a gun business, in our neighborhood.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank the Planning and Zoning Committee, or Commission, I guess is what I say, for sending out the letters to all the homeowners that were involved on the streets. I, I think that's, it sounds like that was a new addition to what you guys have been doing, and that was greatly appreciated. And I hope you continue to do that for any other issues that the Brandon community has.
Commission, any other questions for applicant? Any other concerns that you have?
This is maybe for staff? I don't know. Is this considered retail sales? You said that this might be online, might also be in person. So from the city perspective, is it considered retail? As I read this, there'd be something that would have to be explicitly stated in the conditional use to allow retail sales on a conditional use.
Okay. You guys are asking good questions. They're flipping frantically through their books. Nice job.
I think Brooks is probably speaking to fifteen fourteen eleven G that says, unless expressly permitted by the conditional use permit, no retail sales are permitted from the site other than incidental sales. So incidental sales would be something like, say, you run a salon out of your house and you just happen, someone likes whatever product you use and they just happen to buy a bottle from you, that would be incidental. It's not the main, your business is a salon. So that's kind of what an incidental sale is. So I would classify this as a retail activity. If it was in a commercial zone, the selling of guns would probably fall under the retail heading generally.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
Couple people who express concerns about hours of operation.
So as far as operations go, I work Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. It would be by appointment only, and only when somebody would be going through the process of either, I think it was Dan suggested or commented about inspecting a firearm before purchase or going through the actual process. So it would be, I would say, six to nine, Monday through Friday, and that's in the evenings, six PM to nine PM in the, during the week. And then Saturdays and Sundays would be open to like ten to six or ten to eight, dependent upon the other person's needs and also my availability at the time.
In your application, you said by appointment only? No walk-ins?
Correct. Yep, I don't, I don't want anybody just showing up, like, say, you wanna buy a firearm and you go to Shields or Gary's Gun Shop. I don't want somebody to show up at my home during those hours unannounced. I, I wanna be able to have a communication with them and plan to meet on whatever day at a certain time to either show them a firearm or go through the process of sales, selling a firearm. Not a problem.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Ralph?
How would, how would one find you, I would say?
The intent is to set up a Facebook page and a webpage outside of that, word of mouth. And then I, I know that there was comment about, you know, how many people would be showing up. My intent is to not have, say, more than ten people in a week to go through this. I don't want it taking up all my time unless I were to open up an actual retail sales location. So something like what Reaper did on the, excuse me, on, on the main street there, or, you know, just going storefront. If it comes to take up a lot of my time, that's what I would end up doing, is just simply moving it.
Anybody else have any questions? Hold on just a second. Anybody else up here have any questions? Okay. Come on up to the podium so we can hear you.
You had said you would do a Facebook page or a website. Are you gonna post your address on that, or, like, will it be openly known that it's at your house, or will it be after you've had communication with these people, then they...
After that communication has been made, and there is intent there.
Just a quick question. As I understand it, this is retail sales. Is that correct? That's a retail sales item you're gonna be...
It would be yes.
The city of Brandon is concerned about sales tax. He needs to get himself a sales tax certificate, apply with the state, so the city of Brandon can benefit by their two percent or whatever it is on, on the sales of his business. And I would encourage you to make that a part of the application as well, not excluded.
Anybody else have any comments or concerns or questions? You know, I guess we, we do allow for lots of businesses in people's houses in the city of Brandon. We allow for salons, we allow for daycares, we allow for people who manufacture things, the guy who paints gun stocks. I mean, we, there are a lot of people doing business out of their homes. Now, I don't think we have a lot of retail sales out of people's homes, although if somebody's doing tastefully simple theoretically, that's a retail sale out of your house. So I guess it's up to you guys to just figure out if you wanna allow for the retail portion of this. I mean, most of the businesses we have are, I would say, more service industries, whether they're an accountant or a photographer or whatever.
So this is, this, I struggle with this one. I own guns, I own lots of guns, but to me, it's, to me, it's not about, right now, it's not about a firearm. It's, it's a, it's about retail versus a service. And on one hand, I wanna say, yes, this is retail because he's, he's selling a product. But on the other hand, you can't sell that product without an FFL license. So if somebody wants to purchase firearms, they have to go to a service provider who can do the paperwork, who can, you know, authorize the sale of a, of a weapon to an individual. So yes, he's selling a product, but he's also providing a service, because you can't just go to a store and buy a gun. You have to go through a process to purchase that gun, and an FFL license allows you to provide that service. Now, we've heard some comments about this is so far away from a school and so far away from a football field. This could be right next to Pizza Ranch, and none of us would have a say in this. So, and I understand these types of businesses, they have to start small, and if it works out great and starts taking up a lot of an individual's time, they grow and they outgrow a house. I remember as a kid, one of my favorite places to go to a firearms place was a guy's basement in a residential neighborhood in Sioux Falls. It was a pretty rough neighborhood, but there's no, no issues with it. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep a clear mind and put the firearms perspective out of this. Where, where I'm struggling with this is this a service or is this retail? Sorry, I'm just making some comments here.
Much appreciated.
I, I, I am concerned, you know, if, if we were to approve this, you know, I would put conditions on it that, you know, it's based on orders only, you know, pre-ordered guns, nothing that you're gonna purchase, have on hand, that somebody can just come in and buy, because that, that now becomes retail in my mind, which we specifically say only incidental retail, incidental retail. So I'm just sharing some of my thoughts that I have right now.
Appreciate it. Does anybody else have any thoughts? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Mary Tenet. I live on five oh five Eighth Avenue, which is just a couple of houses down...
Can you give me the address more time?
Mary Tenet, five oh five Eighth Avenue. I guess after hearing all of this, obviously, I'm here because I would like to object to this as well, and I think a lot of people here probably are here for the same reason. And I think what you've stated, this will set a precedence. You know, this is retail sales in a residential neighborhood, and it does set a precedence. And, you know, any one of you sitting here could have somebody trying to sell guns or something else out of your next door neighbor's house tomorrow. So, you know, it decreases the value of our property because there's retail sales happening right across the street or right next door. And we bought in our neighborhood because it is a residential neighborhood, and I do, regardless of whether it's guns or whatever it is, you know, I object to having retail sales in my residential neighborhood. So, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? If there's no other comment, oh, go ahead, sir.
Real quick, Brian, I appreciate your comment. I'm a Second Amendment guy, U.S. Navy combat veteran, but when you were a kid and you went to that basement for the gun shop, it was a different world.
It was.
And we're today.
Thank you.
We approved an in-home occupation for people who make ice cream. Would that be considered retail?
They don't, I don't think they sell it out of their house. They make ice cream and store it in their house, but I believe they sell it out of their house.
They make it at their house. They take it other places and sell it.
That's where I struggle on this one. Is it, is, is this retail or is this a service?
I consider it retail.
Okay.
I didn't see that we had a delineation. I didn't see that we had a designation in our ordinance for what we.
Oh, boy, really? Oh, man.
Just want to re-clear from the home occupation. This is unless expressly permitted by conditional use permit, which is what we're going through, no retail sales are permitted from the site of an incidental sales related to the services. So, if you approve it through a CUP, retail sales can occur.
So, here again, this is my, this is my struggle, incidental to the service. So, what is everybody's definition of retail? Is it having inventory on hand that somebody comes in and purchases? Or are you providing the service where somebody wants to purchase a gun, they order it through you, you do the paperwork, you do the background checks, you submit it through the appropriate agencies, and you are providing that service to allow this purchase person to acquire a firearm?
When you put it.
I mean, I don't buy gas that way. I don't order my gas and then go and pick it up. So, it's, that's where I'm struggling, if this is a service-oriented business or if this is a retail-oriented business.
The way you just stated it made it sound more like a service with a product involved.
There was a man who lived over by Casey's, a block or two away, who sold scroll saw blades and various items he made out of wood with his scroll saws. I would consider that all retail. He's deceased now, but he, unless he just did it without a home occupation permit.
More than likely, yes.
Some people do.
And I appreciate the applicant coming in. I mean, he could get an FFL license and do this for his buddies and his friends. And here again, he's coming in, he's being honest about it, and I appreciate that. And yes, as part of this, he will have to get a license through the city of Brandon and pay taxes on it.
Yes. Go ahead, sir. Come on up.
So, I do have a friend who does a fair amount of buying and selling as well, but he simply pays an existing FFL to receive the gun. That gun is bought and paid for before he even gets it. I'm under the impression he's actually going to make a profit on the gun. So, he is not just selling a service, which would be the acceptance of that firearm because it has to be delivered to an FFL dealer. So, to me, if he's going to be making a profit on the actual firearm, that would be a retail sale. Just because he's gone to the trouble of getting the FFL to receive it at his house is just simply an additional step he has taken to make a retail sale.
I would say that this qualifies as both a service and a retail sale. I believe that he's doing both. They seem to go hand-in-hand with each other. You know, if somebody runs a salon out of their basement and then sells a couple of bottles of shampoo with it, the service, they're a service business who sells a little bit of shampoo on the side, would be my guess. These seem to be like a 50/50 thing. So, you guys have to figure out what you would like to do with this.
I would make a motion to deny the request.
There's a motion to deny the conditional use permit? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to deny the conditional use. Any other, any other discussion? I think we should probably do a roll call vote. Patrick, would you like to handle that?
Sure, roll call vote. So, the motion on the table is a motion to deny the conditional use permit for the home occupation. We will, we'll start with Rob.
So, a yea vote would be to deny the, so, yes. Okay.
So, Rob, just to clarify, Rob is voting to deny the CUP.
People in favor of the motion.
Fifteen years of P&amp;Z and this is the first time we've ever roll called anything. Nice job. All right.
Alyssa.
I will vote in favor of the motion.
Okay.
Thomas.
Maybe because of the amount of people that are guests in this meeting, I'm voting yes.
Yes. Brian?
Yeah, I was, sorry, I was thinking what his response was. This is a difficult one, and I know it involves guns. To me, it just says too much retail, so I'm going to have to vote in favor of the motion to deny the request.
Okay. Chuck?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Guess we didn't need the roll call. Motion is approved to deny the conditional use application. Thanks for coming in. Thanks, everyone, for coming in. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's going to get really exciting after this.
We're going to talk about subject takes, guys. Good stuff. Thank you.
As is probably the case with all of these, there is his right to appeal in the zoning ordinance, and so, we'll follow up with him if he wants to take advantage of that right or not. But in the event that does happen, you all will receive notice of that as well.
All right. Yep. Okay. Huh? Well, I mean, they're leaving. Chuck, here we go. All right, item number nine, public hearing, group home and family definition. Patrick?
So, this is what we worked on quite extensively, and it is up for public hearing. This is to get public comments on the language of the proposed ordinance relating to group home and the definition of family. This amends the zoning ordinance. From here, planning and zoning will make either a recommendation to the city council that they adopt this, or they will make a recommendation that the city council does not. So, ultimately, we'll go to the city council for public hearings and readings as well, but now is the time for the public to comment on the language.
With that being said.
And the language we see here is the most recent language that we talked about and wanted.
So, I would open it up. Are there any public comments? You guys have anything? If you just get your name and address, that would be outstanding.
Yes, sir. Mike Nadolski, Lynn Jackson Schultz.
There we go.
Oh, sorry. There you go. Mike Nadolski, Lynn Jackson Schultz in LeBran. I'm here on behalf of Volunteers of America. I'd like to applaud this board. You recognized a problem with your zoning ordinance. You addressed it, you parsed it, you discussed it. I think there was a lot of thought that went into this. I think it's a well-crafted piece of legislation, and thank you for your, you know, sticktuitiveness, and I urge you to recommend approval to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. There's your compliment for the night. Anybody else have any comments? Anybody on the commission have any comments? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve? Or do you have a comment, Brooks?
Nope, I was going to say, this is, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of this to the city council.
Motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number 10, Stone Ridge Estates, PEP. What does PEP stand for?
Clemeneria here.
There we go. Come on up. You're next.
Feel bad that I lost the audience.
Well, I tried to encourage them to stay.
No, that's all right. Brian Jackson, I'm the Land Development Manager with Vanbosker Companies. I guess what is in front of you, is it just, I guess, up for discussion or where we're at as far as clarification on what we're looking for coming from out of the concept plan, which you approved here at a recent meeting, for lots that will be backing up to Interstate 90. If you're familiar with the Stone Ridge area, that is off of Redwood Boulevard there, right under, I guess, north of the train trestle. Our company recently purchased about 45 acres that you saw there to continue on the Stone Ridge neighborhood. Our intent with this is to clarify and, I guess, have some discussion regarding the minimum lot width requirements of your current ordinances. Our intent with this would be to look forward to visiting about having this continue to be R1 zoning, but have the minimum lot requirements be reduced so that builders could put in villa-style homes. Generally, villa-style homes are just slab-on-grade homes, two or three-car garage, run anywhere from 15 to, well, 2,000 and up square feet. They seem to have gotten bigger over the years as people decided that they, their one-level living, just, they needed a lot of space with that. The other thing that we would eventually ask for too, or as we move forward, would be not so much all of the blue areas, but probably mostly like lots 16 through 25 there, just the smaller ones, is also look to, you know, whether, I guess I don't know what the proper procedure would be, but we'd be asking for five-foot side yard setbacks for those specific lots rather than the seven-foot side yard setbacks in your ordinance. The reason being is that we're looking for this to be a buffer for Interstate 90 traffic for additional homes that are there. It would be a good fit. You'll see as far as a lot of transitional housing, that will go from more of your arterial roads, that they'll go something more like a twin home, town home, villa home type of thing as they get more into the single-family residences that have the bigger lots and everything else like that. And it's just a way to provide housing for people who don't need all the spaces. You know, there's a gentleman here earlier with his six bedrooms. You know, we have a neighborhood in Harrisburg that we have done this, worked with the city down there, in which our lots were like 59 feet wide. The houses there, they're villa homes, slab-on-grade. I think they're two-bedroom, two-bath. They have a three-car garage, and they're running anywhere from 1,500 to 1,600 square feet. They're generally, you know, can run the gamut of, you know, I think, I think traditionally, if anybody was talking to you in a marketing concept, they would be for empty nesters. But obviously, we've had families move into them, just depending on where the location laws are and what their need for housing. So, that is, just here to answer any questions or hear your thoughts.
So, this property, north is I-90, east would be like the industrial park? Is that where this is?
Yeah, I think the land that is on the other side of the blue line there is zoned industrial.
Okay. Okay. Tammy, what are your thoughts on this?
In other locations in town, we have two other developers that are working on putting a concept plan, and they would like to do the same sort of thing. City of Sioux Falls is on the east side of town, and it looks really nice.
So, would we be, instead of altering our R1 zone, would we be smarter to create a new zone?
It'd be better for Patrick. Because in an R2 zone, you can go, or it's 65 feet for minimum.
Yep.
And so, it would be less than that even, and then the setbacks.
I mean, we have tried to change our zoning to accommodate diversity of housing. This would sort of be in that vein, I suppose. I mean, I don't know if, I don't want to change our R1 zone.
Sure.
But we could certainly, I guess, if you guys are interested in talking about it, we could certainly create a different zone just to allow for this sort of, because I know the housing he's talking about with the villa style, with the slab-on-grade, they could call them shotgun houses in New Orleans, I think.
Yeah. We try, yeah, we'd like to have the builders put a little bit of variation on there so it's not the same house, you know, one after the other. And, you know, the floor plan inside might be the same, but exterior-wise, you know, they'll have different garage designs and fronts.
Are you familiar with down by Harmondon Park or 41st Street and Highway 11?
Yep.
There's a bunch of houses that are on an angle, so when you drive down the street, you see, is that kind of stuff?
I think there's one of the other developers that would be interested in doing that. We consider those, we call them Zlots. That's not what, you won't see that in our neighborhoods. We're not, that doesn't fit our concept.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But it would be housing someone to that, except those are, instead of them being long and have the curved driveway, these would just be straight on.
Yeah.
Just the same as the houses as you were talking about on Lark.
But there's no basements.
Right. There's just one level.
Small yards.
Smaller yards. And, you know, the popularity with these is the low maintenance that goes along with it, too. There's less yard to water, there's less mow to mow. Some of them, this one most likely would not, but a lot of them may have HOAs that's doing the lawn care and maintenance, so they always look nice and neat with that. But, yeah, they've shown up in several neighborhoods.
The other option, Tom, in a different zone, you could do a planned development.
Yep.
That would be on its own, would not affect any other areas of the city of Brandon.
But normally with a PD, then they would own the street, too, correct? Or we would own the street as a city?
We have them both ways here now.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Ben Souls has it where that's not the case.
So, we could do a PD that's just the lots themselves without, and the city would still basically own and maintain the street.
I think you're going to get a lot of new requests for a PD then.
PD is kind of a one-shot.
Yeah.
Whereas if you made a zoning district, it would be an option for multiple.
Yeah, and he's talking about only nine lots here.
But Tammy also said there's been multiple requests, the city level, by multiple developers. So, you know, we'd be creating.
It's going to become more common in the future.
So, I'm not interested in allowing a variance to the R1.
Yeah.
Because it sets precedence. If it was R2, I think we'd be fine with the exception of the five-yard setbacks, correct? And then, he did, I think he did point out probably something that slipped through when we made the changes, and that's the side yard setback against R1. I don't think it was, I don't think we intended 15-foot for all applications. I think that was more for the multifamily within an R2. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I think that's something we need to address, Patrick. So, if you have, you know, detached or attached homes, I don't think we need a 15-foot setback against an R1. I think we can stay with the seven-foot. But I guess, to me, the important thing here is, are we willing to consider five-foot Because that's really what you're asking for, right?
Part, well, two parts, yeah. We need the smaller lot width.
But the smaller lot would fit within an R2. But you would need.
Well, if you'd be more willing to do a variance, but, yeah.
No, in R2, we have to be 60?
65.
Feet.
We're just under 60.
I think, yeah, it's 59 to 60 right in there.
Sorry, I guess I, maybe I missed.
So, I guess, just out of, I'll ask Paul, since you're the award-winning building inspector in the city of Brandon. Why do we have seven-foot setbacks?
Is there a reason for building code, fire code, insurance? Is there?
We have too many bikes out there.
Alyssa?
Well, the city of Sioux Falls only has a fire code, so that's only, it's not a fire code issue, so.
Okay.
It's just been seven-foot since I've been here, and it was designed by the planning commissioner or something.
Yep, yep. I just, I was seeing if there was some other logical justification for the seven feet than just, it's what we came up with.
Right, right. Yep.
I would probably, I mean, generally in our neighborhoods that are in Sioux Falls, we require a seven-foot side yard, with the exception of these smaller villa homes, just because they're just designed to be more compact. And generally, what you're finding, I think, is that, you know, maybe I'll defer to Rob on that, but as far as profitability when building these, it's going to be more quantity-driven, you know, smaller lots, cheaper lots, get in there, and, you know, especially when they're trying to do some little higher amenities on it, because a lot of these homes will still have some kind of, you know, granite countertops and different things like that. You know, but, but, yeah, so, in this case, and specifically for here, is the sound buffer. You know, we just think that in... You know, we just think that it'll be great for the people that will live on the south side of Emerald there as they, you know, as it transitions into your more traditional single-family. I mean, the lots up there, I mean, we haven't got anywhere near the pricing, but, I mean, if you've ever been up near the top of there, the views are good, so it's gonna be, yeah. Yeah, you know, so, yeah, it'll be interesting, but I would anticipate that, given the views, that you look over the Big Sioux River Valley, you know, area that, and into the rec area, that it's, there'll be some nice homes there.
So I guess my question to the commission would be, are you guys interested in having Patrick write a new zone?
I'd rather talk about that than consider variances.
I would agree.
And I agree with Brian that I want to protect the R1 too, and not want to even, in any other way, try to carve something out of there. And if it, I know in this case, what we're talking about today, it's probably gonna be premium homes. But I would hope if we did, that it would open the door for maybe some more affordable housing too at some point, so. I think it's worthy of discussion.
And, you know, our job as P&amp;Z is supposed to recognize what the needs of our community are and write ordinances or reflect those. So if this is a need, then I think maybe it would be smart to try to create a zone for it.
Job security.
Patrick is secure.
You know, we're seeing a trend. You know, as our generation grew up, everybody dreamed of big yards and white picket fences. Well, that's not everybody's dream anymore. Nobody, nobody wants to come home from work and maintain their yard.
No.
But yet, we also need to, we also need to make sure that we're not getting too congested either, so. I agree. I don't think we want to do a variance because that sets precedence. So if we want to consider a new zoning district with smaller lots, maybe, maybe a little bit tighter, maybe some smaller side yard setbacks, but not necessarily just open it up to go away from R2s to this new, to this new zone just because it's, you know, cheaper and easier to develop. There's, I think there's, there are certain applications for it, but I don't think we want to eliminate what we currently have as a R2.
I think R1, you know, it promotes a certain sort of house, R2 promotes a certain sort of house, this, whatever district this would be. I mean, by this lot size alone, it will dictate the size of the house that can go on it, like, you're not gonna build a four-story house on top of it, so.
Yeah, and the fact that it doesn't have a basement and-
Well, they could. They could have a basement, but-
I think the basement's an issue that we're-
A lot of these, a lot of these don't, but, oh, my question is this. So you have a whole big neighborhood and maybe just nine lots would be in this new zoning, whatever, R1A or whatever we name it. But is, does, is that anywhere near spot zoning?
I don't, I don't think so.
No?
I mean, it would be if we did industrial use, side of an R, but-
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I, I, I think this is responding to a need that we're seeing, that people don't want these big yards anymore.
I just bring up everything I think of, you know.
Yeah. And I, and I think there are certain applications for it. I mean, when I'm eighty-five years old and I want a house, I don't want to be, you know, maintaining a big yard.
Sometimes it's, you don't wait till you're whole way up to eighty-five.
I would say if you want, if you want to scroll down a page or two, I think I'd send a copy of the plat that we used in Harrisburg as an example. Yeah, so there, so as you can see on this plat, so where the cul-de-sac is, that's all single-family homes on whatever, you know, I say most of those are probably anywhere from eighty to, well, seventy-five to eighty-five feet wide. Is that, yeah, and then, but all the ones there on that Devitt Drive are the villa lots. And then everything to the east where it says Cliff Avenue, that is generally either gonna be some smaller multi-housing. I had a builder that bought about three and a half, four acres up there to build townhomes. And then, but, you know, the subway is right there, there's a dental office. So it's, once again, in this case, it's transitional for our purposes, and I can't speak on the other half of the developers, but that's, it's transitional from the interstate into the single-family. But, yeah, so I guess as I would say, like you said, as far as, that's how we generally see is just, you know, transitional, just getting into that. That, well, you see like over in the bluffs where you have the townhomes as you drive up on Heritage as an example. Because as you're near those arterial roads, you won't be able to find those nice big houses that are generally backing up to that.
So, you know, these do come with, with issues, and we've kind of talked about them previously. You know, as you get narrower lots and people still want wide driveways for two and three-stall garages, you no longer have curbs available for somebody to just pull up and park alongside the street. So, I mean, to just say, yeah, we're gonna go with narrower lots and reduce setbacks. There are things to also consider, you know, some of the difficulties that we struggle with, with cul-de-sac lots and, you know, where you have a smaller frontage and you're trying to cram all of this stuff onto a small frontage. So there's, there's some, there's some disadvantages to going this route as well.
Right. But we can handle that with, with our ordinance, wouldn't we write the, and you can't probably have a three-stall garage.
Right.
Well, I guess I would, the one thing I would interject with is that if you had a fourplex townhome, you'd have less parking space and that would be allowable, basically. So you're gonna have your driveway space, so I think, it's a valid point, I mean, don't get me wrong. But in comparison is that if you're gonna have a multifamily that's gonna fall under the same thing, you're still gonna have driveway widths, especially if they're individual townhomes, that would have the same amount. So this just, this just allows people, because just like the neighbors that were here earlier and keeping their neighborhood, there's a lot of people who don't live in a dwelling but don't want to share a wall.
Yep.
So it sounds like you all are leaning towards a direction of a, a new zone. It's my understanding that Mr. Reed would probably favor more of an exception than, for the R2 district rather than a zone. So I'm just bringing that up for your-
Can we, can we write an exception into the R2 without having to hear variances? Because I think this group would probably not want to hear variances every time somebody wants to do something a little different.
I can certainly work on some language.
What would be easier to write?
I can do either. I'm kind of looking for a preference. But I can write both and present them, and you can choose what you think is most effective.
What would be easiest to administer? If somebody were to come in and apply for a district, what would be easier for them to apply for an exception to an R2? Or would it just be easier for them to ask for this whatever, R whatever?
Probably either way. I mean, we're just gonna pull up the zoning code book and we're just gonna apply the exceptions accordingly. So either reading one page or another page.
I think we would want to make your jobs as easy as possible in writing this.
I think these are gonna be few and far between.
It's hard to say. From my, from my standpoint, I, we don't like variances either.
Yeah.
Because they're subjective, you know, and it'll be like you give one to me and, you know, you give one to somebody else, but then the other person comes in and, you know, for whatever reason, nobody wants it. So, and there's more guidance, you know, because it allows us to plan better because we know what the rules are. And that's, you know, we want to make it just as simple for everybody too. Yeah, here's the rules, if we need to, you know, and just that's how we got to this discussion tonight, is let's come and talk about it and figure out a way rather than, than go through that.
Well, I think that you guys should probably write something and then present it to us. How about that? Are you guys all in agreement? Seems like that's the direction we're heading.
I kind of like the idea of an exception to the ordinances we already have.
Instead of creating a new zone?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, that, that's how I think. I see a couple of cul-de-sacs here. So I have to mention how much we, how much-
Alyssa doesn't like cul-de-sacs.
I hate them with a passion.
Are you talking about the one, that's in Harrisburg, so you don't have to worry about that one, it's on the screen.
Okay, no, any here, any cul-de-sac that exists anywhere is, they're expensive for the city for snow removal. They're, they can be a safety hazard if you have to have a lot of, if emergency vehicles come in there. And talk about variances, we always, we get more variances requests from cul-de-sac properties than any other kind. So I discourage them strongly.
Okay.
Just, thank you.
You're welcome.
You knew I was gonna say that.
She also doesn't like kittens and baby ducks.
Can't say we're necessarily in favor of them either, but sometimes they're just a necessary. Okay.
Do you like dogs?
I'm allergic to dogs, so.
Okay. I think, I think we can move on. You guys have direction?
Awesome. Thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate it.
Okay. Item number eleven, private sport court venues, fencing, netting, allowable heights, setbacks, landscaping. Take it there was a request for something? There we go. Just state your name and address, that would be awesome.
TJ Barthman, 1016 South Nicholas Avenue. I'm taking out the fence for-
Oh, he has private defenses. Yeah, once you can see for our pay.
Who would like, do you guys want to give us some information here?
So as, the reason this came up for discussion was as many times happens, an occurrence came up that seems to be a little bit of a gray area. And so this family put a sport court in. There needs to be some adjustment to where it's located, but we're gonna work at those details. And then he has suggested putting up some netting to potentially stop basketballs or baseballs or whatever from going into neighbor's property. So when Mr. Reed and Patrick and I and Alyssa talked about it, you know, we thought maybe we would bring just something matter up because we weren't quite sure, is it, was it more netting or is it more fencing or is it something that we can decipher here tonight? So go ahead, Mr. Barthman.
No, that's, that's about exactly it. So we would look to put this net up, not a fence. It's, it'll have three fifteen-foot poles with netting in between. So the nets would come down in the winter, they're just, they're just clipped on to the side of the pole, but the poles would obviously be sticking out here.
So in the, in the fence regulations in R1, to which this gentleman has a home in, in no case shall fences exceed six feet. So we thought about that during discussions. You go down to number eight, under public tennis courts, public baseball fields, et cetera, you can go up to twenty-four feet. Obviously, this is not public. So Mr. Reed thought that what we would do is, is bring this and possibly, under the circumstances, under private, allow something to go over six feet if he thought it was a fence. So we just have to, you know, decipher fence, net, six feet, twenty-four feet, private, public.
So the definition of fence on page one thirty of the zoning ordinance is "an artificially constructed barrier of any material or combination of materials erected to enclose or screen areas of land." And then for purposes of this ordinance, a fence shall not be considered an accessory structure.
Okay.
So there's a lot of trampolines out there that have this. Obviously a trampoline you can move in your backyard, but from a visual standpoint, it's basically the same thing.
That's true. Yeah, I was just gonna say that I don't think this is a fence, but then hearing that definition, I think it meets that definition. Your trampoline, that'd be something connected to the trampoline, so maybe that's why that's not, hasn't been an issue, but. I mean, I see this as a good thing in a lot of cases to have some type of screening around. If a sport court like this is allowed to provide some way of-
The six-foot fence will probably not stop a bouncing basketball from going in the neighbor's yard.
Yes, correct.
Now, it's a matter of whether or not you want fifteen-foot poles in people's backyards.
Or if you do, or if you do allow the poles, would there be a setback, like a shed has to be five feet? Do we make the poles be setback fences? There's no setback. Sheds, there are. Netting poles, yet to be determined.
Do we, do we have a, do we have a height requirement for, I know we rewrote like our wind power ordinance, so somebody could put a wind thing on top of their house, we wrote an ordinance for how high that could be. I believe when we wrote the ordinance, we wouldn't allow for somebody to erect one from the ground up in their backyard. Or maybe we did and we allowed for a certain height on that.
So on page one oh three, "tower height of an accessory wind energy conversion system. In no event shall the height of a wind energy conversion system exceed fifty-five feet in NRC or the residential or a hundred and fifty feet in commercial or industrials as measured from the ground to the rotor hub."
Okay, so there you go. Want to put a wind tower on top of these things? So we do, you know, by hearing that, we do allow for a tower per se in somebody's backyard of at least fifty-five feet.
I have a couple of questions. Why does it have to be fifteen? I think, would ten be okay?
Uh, that's the way the poles are purchased. I'm not manufacturing them, I'm buying them, and that's the way I can buy them.
Okay, and is this on a property line or is it?
Yep.
It's right on the property line?
Yep, and that's what Paul was suggesting, maybe if we have to come off a little bit, we could. But, yeah, the original plan was to have them there, but we can bring them off. Like a shed is what your example was. But the fence, a fence is not required to come off the property line.
Do we just, we put them just inside, it could be an inch, six inches of foot, you know.
Do we, we require?
They're ten-foot side walls. We don't maximize the peak of the roof to the grade. It's just the side wall height's a ten, and then the owner can decide.
So it could be, we could be five feet off of a property line with an accessory structure. As long as the sidewalls are ten feet, the gable end could be taller.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, suggestions?
Yeah, I think the staff just wanted to get some feedback. It was a gray area. And not only for this gentleman's purposes, but for future purposes.
Yeah.
Could sport courts proliferate and many more people come to get netting. I like the idea of having a setback like we do with the accessory building.
Because we have a setback on the court itself, don't we?
Five feet.
Five feet would be the same as the accessory buildings that we have five feet.
Because it's poured concrete and poured concrete beetle less than five feet.
So there is that special written-out exception for something like children's playhouse in, for an accessory building. We could treat sport court probably similarly as an accessory building, but then we would want, then we'd have to deal with the residential being limited to one. So that would be another thing to pull on, so there's, there's some ways to do it, we're just-
If we call netting a fence, then will people ask to just put a net fence around their swimming pool or something?
Can we define netting and just make an exception for this situation if it does arise again? If somebody wants to put a basketball court in their backyard or whatever?
Tennis or-
So that we're not confusing it with fences around pools and whatnot?
Yeah, I'd like, if we do allow this, I'd like to see us put something in there for openness. Whether it's, whether it's a chain link fence, whether it's a net, whatever it is, obviously I would not want to see a fifteen-foot-high opaque
No.
fence around somebody's basketball court or-
We have these discussions because, believe it or not, people will do it. Yes. So I suppose you guys are just looking for guidance, you want to know what you should write? If you should write something? Sort of like with the last thing, we're just gonna make Patrick busy writing stuff?
Patrick, could you, could you look to see what some of the other communities might have regarding this topic? And see how they, how they might address it?
There are certainly basketball courts in other communities, in people's backyards.
If, so, for, for example, in Sioux Falls, if you, if you do take Madison in, um, continue going in towards Washington High School. The Catholic Church is on your left. Right, on your right-hand side, there's a house there that has exactly this. That's where I kinda got the idea. It's exactly this. It has the netting, the 15-foot poles. There's, there's goes, I think, three sides. Mine is just, I'm just looking for one side. I'm not encompass, and I'm not enclosing it by any stretch. I'm just doing the, my neighbor's side, so we're not going over to his yard. If my kids could shoot better, we wouldn't have to worry about it, but...
Yes, Tammy?
You wanna know, putting lights on these poles?
No.
Oh. So, we can write that into the, as well. I mean, they can't be lit poles. I got light basketball courts.
I have a sports court over, off sunshine. It's near Riley.
Correct, yep. I know which one you're talking about.
He's got his own, it's a separate lot.
Yep, bought a lot, put a cement cord on it. Yep, yep.
No net around it or anything, but he's a...
It's his lot. Yeah, yeah. I don't have that luxury.
I know what you're talking about.
I'm, you know, in a lot of ways, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor from going on to his, but yet still try and keep our sport court assess, you know, usable. I have seen it in, as you said, other communities, and, um, definitely not here to just push the envelope. I, I want a guidance. I had Paul come up. We actually looked at it together at the house. And yeah, I think we're kind of to the point where we're looking for guidance from you guys.
Okay. Well, I, I would think that we're in approval of some sort of language that allows for this, but does not allow for, like Brian said, a giant opaque barrier.
And you said this would be seasonal. You'd take, it wouldn't be up all year round?
No, typically what'll happen in the winter, those nets will deteriorate pretty quick if you leave them up in the wind and the, the winter gusts and the snow and the ice, so they usually come down, yeah.
So, is that something to mention in this?
I don't know if you would wanna police whether or not a net comes down in the winter?
Seasonal?
I wouldn't.
No?
Yeah, I don't know if we would wanna get into that.
No, okay.
And whether it's a net or it's a chain link fence, I don't know if that really matters. I just, I, I just think there needs to be some level of openness.
Yeah. You wouldn't wanna 10-foot, 12-foot chain link, would you? Or no? Or you wouldn't mind?
I, I, I don't know. Okay. Right away, Patrick. Thank you. Item number 12, um, discussion...
These days, we'll get a perfect work list.
No. Really?
Be perfect for about two days.
Yeah.
Discussion on allowing septic tanks in R1 low-density residential districts as conditional use or under specified criteria. Patrick wrote a lot.
So, it's, a lot of what is in there are the state administrative rules related to septic tanks. So, what I wrote in ordinance form is just kind of a very, very rough sketch-out. And the, the highlights of it are, do we want this to be something that is permitted prior to a building permit? So, it's, the septic system is reviewed prior to the building permit. Generally, I probably would not have the expertise to review a septic system, but maybe our city engineer would?
Or we would hire it? I mean, we would have to have it... I mean, part of the discussion was having it engineered, right?
If it's engineered out and they bring that paperwork in, then it should be able to be permitted. That's how it is in the county. You have to bring, like, uh, I can't think of the word right now. Where they drill a hole and put water in it, and then...
Percolation.
Percolation. They, you have to bring that into the county to prove that it, so you don't have to put a NODAC system in or something like that, so...
So, if your documentation is in order?
Yeah, I think you can be the person, otherwise they won't give it to you.
Does that sound good? Okay. Anything else?
Um...
Any other highlights? I like Cliff Notes.
So, Patrick, one question I had for you. You kinda put in there a question mark on lot size. I see on page 60 that state, state statute, I don't know if this is a codified law or what it is, and you copied us on it. They have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet?
Yep. So, administrative rules kinda work like, like the EPA is given a broad directive from Congress and the EPA fills in the details. So, that's what the administrative rules do for DE and R. So, yes, so generally, you can go more than the state in most situations unless it's field preempted, but it's, it's complicated. It's, you can generally do more, just not less than the state. So, I know, I vaguely remember I was talking about an acre, but I don't know where you want the dividing size to be.
So, like, my question is, we, we cannot go, we could not allow something less than 20,000 square feet?
Correct. They would not get any approval from the state.
That would not be able to, that would be this a lot where the state is on point.
Correct.
That's a pretty big lot.
So, just for those of us who are a little challenged, how big's a 20,000-square-foot lot?
How big is 200?
Is that an acre? Is it less than an acre? Half an acre?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay, that's about two to two and a half normal residential lots.
So, we were, when we were talking about doing an acre, the city would, or the state would actually require half of what we were thinking about doing.
And, and that's somewhat where you can factor in, how do you want these lots to develop? Do you want them to be large estate lots? This, that's how you could also keep them from getting too small. Whatever you deem that to be, not less than the state standard.
No, I didn't read all of this in great detail. Did, does the state, I saw you also had some high watermark setbacks. Was there anything in the codified laws about that?
There is some setback things in there. I kinda left the, on page 46 and 47, I left those numbers open. They're, most of them are 300 feet or less. But I've, it, and where I think the number they have for within, of a dwelling, I wanna say it was 10 feet. But... It's, that depends if you want, if you want just to rely on those, they, numbers in this ordinance probably don't need to be there. Or if you want something more, that's why those are in there. But there are setbacks by the state written in here somewhere.
Since we have a developer and a real estate agent in the room, do you guys have anything you'd like to add to this discussion? Do you know what we're talking about? Well, the, the whole discussion that we're having is, is whether or not we should allow for septic tanks in larger lot developments.
So, you're, you're making one acre lots, and the law, the state is 20,000 square feet?
So... Yeah, so...
Forty-three-five, yeah, so, go ahead.
The, the discussion came about because there's a lot of land outside of the city limits of Brandon that isn't necessarily real easy to service with sewer systems, without a lot of lift stations, without a lot of expense. But there is interest in developing these lots. You know, um, so the discussion started with whether or not we allow for septic until such time that sanitary sewer can be provided, basically. So, that's, that's the discussion we're having. I mean, I don't know if you guys have anything you wanna add to it or not, it's sort of in your wheelhouse, but...
I think for, I think, I think there is a demand for bigger lots, um, kind of against, a little different concept there, bigger, but a different clientele as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I, I think that if you had some additional things that both places could have, whether you're on an acre lot and you get an outbuilding, or you get some type of shed, you can do something on that. I think that there is a big demand for that right now, but we can't find lots more.
Yep. So, we, I mean, we already account for things like accessory structures and whatnot on, on lot sizes and all this. Well, and we can get water to these properties. What we're having a hard time is getting sanitary sewer to them. So, the only way to make them developable lots is to allow for, um, a septic tank. But we're trying to write an ordinance that if the time comes that there is sewer system, they have to hook up to it.
And who pays for it?
The developer slash homeowner would pay for the infrastructure to be in place until such time that the city can actually get services there.
So, I guess I would say that if it was, if there's someone buying a lot, they're gonna put a septic tank and build a house.
Yep. So, what we're trying to do also is have the infrastructure in place as the house is built, as the, as the neighborhood and property are developed. So, as though we're not going back at such a time and retrofitting everything and digging up everybody's street and property and whatnot.
So, what we're saying is, developer would still have to put in utilities in the, in the right of way, and the homeowner would still have to put the lines in connecting out to that. It just would not be active until the city brought the service out to that development.
Is it, is it not being serviced because of the station?
Yes.
Is it, you know, is it not, I mean... To me, that's just putting the pipe in the ground, that community may not ever use it.
Yep.
And then, you're just adding things that's on the person buying the lot.
Yep.
It is, yes.
You, you are correct.
But the problem is, when, what happens with these developments, if, if this stuff is not done, then all of a sudden, who pays for it, for it to go in? And then the city council gets, a lot of upset people coming in and...
Yes. So, we're, we have a hard time annexing rural subdivisions. Yeah. Yeah, sorry. So, we do have, we do have an issue with, with trying to annex rural subdivisions.
Did those roads that weren't paved yet, and, I'm sorry, sorry.
Come on out, man.
Oh, I was talking about, I thought I was...
You've been, you've, you've been drug into this. That's what you get for sticking around.
A potential question would be, or an alternative would be, if you, if you did those but didn't pave the road yet, if tho, if that cost could then be saved, that you're not putting the pipe in the middle of the road. And not, you don't wanna concrete or asphalt to get either, cause that'll get tore up at some point, but if they were more, um, like, it's called Split Rock out there, um, on the other side of Bethany, where it's more of a gravel or a dirt road at this time, when sewer got there, it'd be a lot easier to tear that out, put in your pipe then. Then it's a new pipe. It's not a 10-year-old pipe, or a 12-year-old pipe, or a 15-year-old pipe, or a pipe that never gets used. But you're also not having the cost of paving the road today and tearing it out later. I think they had that issue at Split Rock Heights over in Sioux Falls. They fought the city on that, cause the city was gonna come in and they wanted to put curb and gutter in, I believe, and all this...
Services.
Services, and they fought it. Said, "We don't want that in our neighborhood."
So, the other issue...
You get that where it's sitting in the middle with nothing done to it of the town. Right. It is now, starting to be surrounded. Surrounded, yeah.
So, the other issue that Brandon's having is that the county won't really allow for density. So, we've been approached by developers who want to do development. They're on the outskirts of our town. They can't do a rural subdivision because they're out of housing allotments. So, then how do you allow for development when you can't provide the services that, you know, would normally go into a city development?
I know there's been some other communities that have done what are called a pre-annexation agreement, um, which is then given to that lot purchaser. Um, they're basically agreeing on the front end that when that day comes that that gets here, they're agreeing to annexation. So, there's that out there. Um, I wouldn't say I'm an expert on it, but I definitely know there's pre-annexation agreements that exist and are currently being used. Yeah. Harrisburg, yeah. So, I mean, that might be a road to go down to, you know, I guess if you're developing and I'm selling it, um, that's on our end to sell the lot with that pre-annexation agreement. So, you get a lot of that covered on the front end. I think the fight that you're talking about, that's the hard part for everybody, and we've been in here four months ago when all that goes. I mean, that's the tough part, and that's what you don't want. And that's where I think a pre-annexation agreement does make a lot of sense. If I'm selling that lot, I would much rather sell that with some type of guidance cost, um, to you to say, "When the city sewer gets here, this, this is your expense." It's a percent of, cause we won't have the dollar amount. We don't know that part, but it would be a percent of your tax assessed value. It would be a percent of your lot size. It would be a percent of your frontage. Whatever that percent is, you know that percent. I can sell you that and explain that to you on the purchase. You know, you're gonna be, if you have, if you have 60-foot of frontage, you're gonna be charged X amount per foot of frontage when this comes through. You know that cost. I know that cost, certain percent, whatever it is. Um, but it would prevent the, the, the later fight. Which nobody wants. And I don't want that. If I, if I was selling you that lot, I would not want you to come back to me in 10 years, call me up and be, you know, mad at me that now you're getting annexed and I should've told you that, you know, I want all that sold on the front end.
I, I understand that, and actually, that all works.
Yep.
But those things get forgotten about, or when the house gets sold and the, the purchaser, they're sitting there, they're signing paperwork, you know, redefined print, and then all of a sudden, they're stuck with $10,000 to $50,000 of bills to pay for something that, like, why do I need to pay for that? I've got a, I've got my own sewer system out here that I have already paid for.
So, I think in the pre, yep.
Now, I've gotta dig up my driveway, or I gotta dig up my sidewalk, or I gotta dig up my trees to get a line from my house out to the street, plus pay for the line in the street, you know?
And I think some of the agreements out there, they state that you, even, even if city got there, you don't have to connect until you need a new septic. So, even though it's there, if your septic's in working order and passing every inspection, you're fine. But as soon as that needs any type of work or replaced, you're off. You, you've gotta connect. And so, to that point, you, you, you can't say, "Well, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine. I don't need to connect." No, you're not fine. You gotta do a $10,000 replacement, so you're not gonna do that, and instead, you're gonna connect.
And then, the other thing with, with the city of Brandon, when we, when we charge you for water, you get charged for water and sewer. So, now, we could have people coming in and saying, "Well, jeez, you're charging me for sewer because of my usage of water," but you don't, you're not providing...
Yeah, that I wouldn't. I don't have an answer for that one. Yeah, I don't have an answer for that one.
Um, and, so when they sign these pre-annexation agreements, does that mean that they are not a part of the city limits?
Means they're current county. Yeah, current county.
So theoretically, if we let somebody do a seven-lot development, they're all six-acre lots, they sign a pre-annexation agreement, they may never be part of the city of Brandon.
Correct, if you don't annex it, yeah.
Does the county allow that?
Yeah.
And the county would allow for all those homes to be built?
That goes through the county permitting? They get a, they get a building permit through the county?
Yeah, so when, the little bit I've looked into it, the county's, the, the county will allow it, but they still need either council or PMZ blessing, I think was the word I got.
Yeah, so if it's within our jurisdictional three-mile radius?
Yeah.
Then all those plots still come through for review? So, then that would be our chance to say yes or no?
I guess I'd, I'd rather be annexed into the city so that we have no control over the county.
Well, there's that too.
Also, also, also from a taxation standpoint, that's why we're doing this, right, Barbie?
Well, yeah, there is that too.
Yeah, it drives the property, your property tax revenue.
Well, right, cause otherwise, if they build in the county, then the city of Brandon gets a zero...
Right.
Dollars property tax.
And what we're talking about is let them build, and we'll generate some tax revenue, so we can eventually break.
That would be the thing, yeah. It, it would be a, it would be an approval today for an investment later type of deal.
You know, typically, when we run sewer out, we're running it to a 400 or 500-house development, and then you break that cost up amongst all those lots, and it's a little easier to swallow than six lots.
Right. And that's, and that's, I think, based on wherever your development you're looking at, is there, is there a, a, an additional development that can go on the other side of that current one? That at some day, you know, 10 years along now, you know, 15 years, maybe the other side's ready to be developed at that time, and it makes more sense.
Um, I just know that around Brandon, all the flatland is taken. All the easy stuff is gone.
All the easy stuff is gone, yeah. I don't disagree.
And, but the, the stuff that's not easy is attractive to certain people. So, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do is help accommodate that.
Yeah, I know some of the discussions we had was, there's some unique housing opportunities that I get asked... Yeah, I know some of the discussions we had was there's some unique housing opportunities that I get asked for as a realtor that don't necessarily fit into R1 to, to today in the city. If that was done on a county level and then annexed in, there would have to be some type of, of grandfather clause or some type of agreement then that that, you know what I'm saying? So if you put them on an acre lot, and they were, you know, one of the, the, one of the designs now is called a shouse or a barn dominium type looking house. If one of those went on there, that's not allowed in the city today, but it is in the county. So if that was a county today, is that approved or not approved? Is it grandfathered in, wants you annex that in?
I just know that, putting on my city council hat for a second, the annexation fight that we went through for a year, I would just as soon set up pre, or future councils to not have to go through that at all.
Yeah.
Right? So, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the land that's around the city should either be annexed into the city and then figure out a way to creatively develop it, or just not be allowed to be developed on.
I, I'm in favor of the pre-annexation, because as I was saying to wrap, you know, the last thing I would ever want is somebody to come back on me and when that annexation fight happens, I would much rather have it, hey, I was, you know, you signed this, it was claimed to you back then. Much rather have that than the fight that I saw, you know, last time around with some of this annexation stuff. I wouldn't want to be.
No.
Nope, I agree with you. I miss anything.
Thanks for.
I guess that the pre-annexa- I know you said they're defined print, but, you know, that the pre-annexation agreement we recorded, you'd show up with the title work. So long as the realtor, the vendor, read the title work like you should, it would be there before closing for somebody actually purchased. So, I guess there's only so much you can do to try and educate a future homeowner about what's going on.
That's not gonna help the city, so I would not be in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Again, the, the pre-annexation doesn't really do much for the city.
Well, it does, it does, because when you get to the annexation point, now you've got property tax revenue.
But that could be thirty years.
It could be, but the other. Hey, if you put sewer out there, we can develop that thing tomorrow.
That, that, that's the same concept of like, well, we want the sewer pipe put in the ground, well, maybe thirty years before.
Right.
So it's why, why spend all that extra money or something that we're gonna have to use for.
Right. And so to Barb's point, to Barb's point, where, where do you want it? Because like, you're, to your point, it's all taken. So, you've, you've, you've either got, the city's either gotta put in this acceptable and accessible sewer for more land to be developed, or you're gonna have to look at something like this where you're gonna have to let somebody else take the risk of developing it today with the hope that later you're gonna annexation in without a fight, have the pre-annexation agreement. You're kind of at that, what comes first? The city paying for the sewer, or are you allowing an annexation later? It's one of.
I, I guess, you know, look at it that way. When you talk about six one-acre lots, or whatever size acres that you're talking about, if you want that in any way, I mean, I think you might wanna focus on pre-annexation agreement for a subdivision that's gonna be two hundred or three hundred lots, where you're gonna be able to start recouping some costs right away, because the cost to that homeowner that has that acre lot is, it's the same amount of pipe, you know, same amount of cost, to split over six people versus two hundred. So I guess you have to look at the economics of it.
Yep. Okay. You guys have any other questions or thoughts? That's actually some stuff that we probably hadn't thought about in our previous discussions. Would be my guess.
I can't figure out.
So we didn't give you more answers, we gave you more questions.
Well, yeah. Oh, no, please, come every time, we would love it.
I can't figure out why if somebody would want a, an acre lot or a couple acre lot, and put a fancy house on it, a million hot dollar house, two million dollar house, and then be happy with, happy with a, or seven million, yeah. Why, why would you want all that fancy property, fancy house and everything, and then have a septic tank?
Oh, no, that, that happens all the time.
Really?
Septic tank, oh gosh, yes. There are septic tanks everywhere.
Well, it's, having, having a fancy property and a fancy house is such a foreign concept to me.
Sure.
It's not something I've ever thought about.
They don't have a giant holding tank in the backyard.
I don't know.
They all have septic tanks. It's very common.
Oh, well, all right.
Yes. Well, that's more to think about. I think that, that provides more, um, more conversation than, uh, anything. Did that shoot holes in your thing, Patrick? Or anything more to think about?
I mean, probably, but it was nowhere near done anyway, so, it's fine.
I mean, probably.
Work in progress. It's best we iron out the kinks now.
I think we answered one of the questions, what, what size lot, right?
Yeah.
Because, do you guys think we need to be larger than the twenty thousand square feet? Yeah, obviously, we can't do smaller.
Right.
Twenty thousand is, what'd you say, half an acre?
Roughly, yeah. But I thought acres, forty-three thousand and some square feet, I just looked up via Google.
My little house is on a third of an acre. Half an acre, you could, you're gonna be able to build a big house with.
I do happen to know one case, Roberts County, because of a lake property, that they do something similar. They will only allow you to have a holding tank if you're under twenty thousand square feet. You can have a septic system with a drain field if you're over twenty thousand square feet. They use that twenty thousand square foot number two for this. I'm not as interested in the holding tank. It's just the bigger, the full septic system, but I bet, I just know they happen to use that, similar to that state number.
So, I, I, I do think that, you know, if we were to go the pre-annexation route, then, um, the ordinance or whatever Patrick wrote would be sort of irrelevant. Right? I mean, because we wouldn't be making exceptions if, if we did the pre-annexation. So I do think maybe we need to think about what, all that, and then maybe talk about it at our next meeting. Because I am still trying to process it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of pre-annexation agreement. I think we annex them in, we bring all the other utilities in, we bring power, we bring water, we bring all of that in. We annex them in, we just don't have the sewer.
And I'm in, in agreement with that, and I'm not sure I'm gonna change my mind. The thing that concerns me about these pre-annexation agreements, and I'd want the city attorney to look at, to know what she's gonna, she or he's gonna have to fight, because somebody's gonna take us to court. You just know they will.
Yep. They will. Either because we're charging them too much for water, whether or not getting sewer service, or, yeah.
I mean, the other, the other option is just not to allow for development that's bordering the city. I mean, that, that would be, unless you're gonna do it, let, let's call it in a traditional manner, where you're doing four or five hundred lots. Because I do know also, having gone through our CAP and budget, we don't have enough money to bring sewer systems out and, and, and pre-front all that. I mean, we don't have tens of millions of dollars in the bank to be able to do that. So, we kinda lean heavily on development to drive where our utilities end up going. Like, we don't get to drive where our utilities go, because we just don't have that kind of money.
Well, the other problem is the larger these lots are, the more expensive it's gonna be for the developer. I mean, if we say, well, it has to be a minimum one acre lot, now, you think about running streets and other utilities through one acre plus lots versus half acre lots. The cost per lot doubles.
Okay.
And then we're also agreeing that people want five-foot sidewalks, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, we've had an interesting conversation. We've bond, we've swung the pendulum really far in both directions.
Both extremes here.
Yes. Okay. Um, I think I might be ready to move on from twelve, unless you guys have anything else.
Can I give you three thoughts, just real quick? On utility billing, we do have people that have septic tanks now. Um, they're using our water, so they are only billed for water, they're not billed for sewer, because they're not use our sewer. Yep.
There we go.
Um, some of them, the people that do have septic tanks that could connect onto sewer, uh, the city council has taken the stance that they do not have to connect to sewer until their septic tank fails, then they have to connect to sewer.
Yeah, I thought we already had that.
Yep. And then if you look like along Split Rock Boulevard, there's those homes up there, they do not have sewer. It's really hard to get them sewer, and they are less than an acre lot. Um, the sewer doesn't always have to be designed in the roadway either. We have the bluffs. Um, it is in their backyards in one section of it, but it does go down a drainage way, and so that does add other problems or issues sometimes. Um, and then the city actually owns that lot, that, that sewer goes down. So, it could be designed where it's in their backyards, and the city owns a section through it, or that section gets dedicated to the city, and then the city could put in the infrastructure. So, there's ways to do it, to design it ahead of time so that it could work, that would protect the city. But at the same time, then, when you look at like Redwood and Chestnut, one of the problems we came up with there was when we put in the sewer, some of their service lines connect into their homes at different elevations, and we're not able to make all of them work without them having an individual lift station. So it would be smaller, but that adds additional costs, so you wouldn't just have the special assessment of the infrastructure. You would also have a lift station that has to be maintained by the homeowner as well. So, retrofitting is always difficult.
Yes. Which is why we were trying to pre-design to start with.
Right.
To not have to go through the retrofitting process, knowing we were adding expenses to the front end of all of this development. But trying to take some pressure off of later, so we didn't have the same problems we have in other places. I still, there's more to think about there. Okay. Item thirteen, discussion on institutional zones, parking requirements, setbacks, signs.
So, this is the industrial zone. We amended LI and HI to include the contractor shops surrounded by commonly owned space. Pro- it presents a problem for both parking and signs. If there is no extra room on their own lot for parking, how do you deal with that? And signage is based on their percentage of, their amount of street frontage, if they are surrounded by commonly owned space and not on a street frontage. Conceptually, no signage. So, these attempt to do that, the first two basically say if they choose to do so with parking, they can come up with an agreement approved by P and Z to utilize the commonly owned space collectively for their parking. And then with the signs, it says their portion of signage is based on their share of the commonly owned spaces, linear street frontage.
So will this come up also when we do, like, the PD that's happening out by the interstate? Because isn't, aren't we also running into a problem there with signs?
The.
Brandon Plaza.
Um, I, I think for that, li- linear street frontage is defined both public and private.
Okay.
So I think we're probably fine there. It's just the problem when street, it's based on street frontage and it's not on the street.
Okay.
So I see this is written just for LI and HI, but we also allow this concept in general business?
Yep.
So, I would like to see us address both of those in this reverbage.
Yep.
Both from a parking and, and a signage standpoint.
Stylistically, the first one about parking, there, there's two ordinances in there. The first one breaks it down and includes the same language in each section, being A1D, then A2D, and that, that's side, front, and rear. Or the second one just has a blanket exception, however stylistically you wanna do it. I was just looking for some feedback.
And then my other question, um, this would address the building mounted signage, but we should probably start to think about freestanding signage and
Yep.
how that works, because I would, I would assume freestanding signage would be in the, would fall in the common area, and that would have to apply to all the individually platted properties, correct?
Correct. So, freestanding sign is based on the same calculation as your wall signage. So, yes, we would have to look at that as well. This is a first stab in the dark showing you that we may have a thing to address, just because I know some are actively looking to build out, enroving to do these types of things, and I imagine they wouldn't be too happy if we told them, "You can't have any signs on your."
Kind of like, we, this came up, I don't know, a year, two years ago, the sunshine sign, and they wanted to add to it. Um, it would, it would kind of be the same issue had all of, like, the subway and the bank and that been um, inside of a larger public, common area. Those happen to be individual parcels, but but I think, I think we need to address also the, the freestanding signage as part of this change for both LI, HI, and general business.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
Nope.
Perfect. Item number fourteen, parking pad definition. Patrick?
So if you drive around town, you will notice that people have travel trailers and recreational motor vehicles parked on parking pads. So parking pad originally just had the definition as being one or more motor vehicles. So this is, it is a thing that does exist in town, and I have one question to ask you all about. So, nine says each parking space shall be directly accessible to an access aisle. Do we treat parking pads in that situation the same as a parking space, or would you like to clarify each parking space and parking pad? Or do you not want, or would you be okay with someone driving over their grass, conceptually, to park on a parking pad?
There's some of these things.
An access aisle would have to meet the same requirement, so if it was R1, it would have to be hard-surfaced?
Man, after all these years, some things still make my eyes twitch. This would be one of them. Twitch.
If you drive around town, you will see this. It's a particular one that did come up. There, there, there are a few of them.
Any thoughts? Anything you can help Patrick with here? If everybody's brains fried, we might have to come back to this at a different time.
That's fine, too.
One thing I would like to add is, um, I know we talk about motor vehicles and travel trailers. I would also like to add just standard trailers.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there's a citizen we're working with now that said to me, "No word does it say that I cannot drive from the street to get to my pad, that I can't drive on grass." But that's always the intent, is that you don't drive a motorized vehicle or a trailer on grass to get to that pad, so.
I think we get to take, uh, yeah.
You want them to be able to drive on hard surface, not across grass. Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
Um, and we tried to define hard surface a couple of years ago as something other than just concrete.
Yeah, it's, it's asphalt or pavers put together.
It's not grass.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's concrete poured, concrete, or asphalt poured, or, or, you know, pavers put together. So amongst, in, in, linked with the, with the, with our trailers, so.
Anybody else have anything to add to that? We good?
Good.
Item fifteen is the building permits. Paul is not building as many houses as he used to. You're slowing down, man.
There's a lot of work to be done. We're working on the Dairy Queen and the attic.
I love both of those. Um, thank you both for, I kinda jumped ya. I appreciate it. I appreciate your input. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Chuck? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight thirty-seven. Our last council meeting was eighteen minutes. Eighteen minutes was our last council meeting.